In what may be one of the stupidest in what may be one of the stupidest, serious debates I've ever heard in government. A city council meeting here in Kentucky spent 30 minutes debating the city council's seating chart and how racist it might be. Daniel Cameron says there'd be no mask mandates when he's governor. And then finally, the National Federation of Republican Women is preparing for a big fight over what is a woman? I'll talk to you about that and what you can do locally as a Republican here today on the Andrew Cooper Rider Show. But before we dig into it, please make sure you like, comment, share, subscribe. As always, I'm your host, Andrew Cooper Rider. And if you're listening to this in a podcast form, remember to leave a review. And for all of you listening on Facebook or Twitter or YouTube, and you love listening to the show, but you want to be able to take it more so on the go, listen to your car on your way home, whatever it may be, you can always listen to this in the podcast form on all major podcasting platforms, including Spotify, Apple, Pandora, iHeart, Amazon, Google Podcasts, wherever podcasts are listens to just search Andrew Cooper Rider, and you should be able to find me. Without further ado, let's dig down into it. So this next story will bring laughs and disbeliefs to those who don't live in Lexington, while it brings tears to people like me who do. Tears over how Lexington City Council spent 30 minutes debating a seating chart and how racist it might be. Maybe you don't live in Lexington, but what you should know is that these types of dumb debates happen all across the state. They happen in Bowling Green, which has historically had a little bit of liberal government, happens, of course, in Louisville, some northern Kentucky towns. It happens all over. And this is why it's incredibly important, especially if your city council races are nonpartisan, like they are here in Lexington, to pay attention to who you're voting for. Because quite frankly, this is a ridiculous story. I'm and when I'm talking about seating chart, I'm not talking about like a seating chart for the audience. Like if you're in this district, you sit here, you sit here. No, I'm talking about the assigned seats at the city council table in Lexington in their city council room. Like they've got their, you know, their desks podium thing that they all sit at, and there's 15 of them. And apparently, they need a seating chart, they need assigned seating. Now, these are people who are elected to lead the city fiscally, manage millions of dollars, and represent the people of their districts, or if they're at large people as a whole. And yet, they still act like little children arguing over who gets to sit closest to the center of the group. Now, didn't used to be this way. See, up until this year, pretty much the way it worked in city council here in Lexington was that people simply walked in, it was kind of first come, first serve. You walked in and you grab a seat. Of course, the vice mayor sat at the middle because they lead the entire process, but everybody else, you just kind of walked in and you grabbed a seat. However, with this most recent group of new people coming in, we've got an overflow of social justice warriors. And this is when issues began to arise and arguments started simply over seats. So the Rules Committee in the city council decided to put together a seating chart. It's a rather simple chart. All it did was simply say, okay, we're going to number the seats one through 12, the amount of city council districts are, we're going to number it one through 12. And then the center will be the two at large on one side, and then the vice mayor in the center, because the vice mayor is voted on, is the largest vote getter at the at-large seats. Simple enough seating chart, just numbered out. Okay, now we don't need to argue about it. Should be simple and straightforward. However, this simple solution became a rather large debate that, by the way, still isn't solved. And after a overarching presentation that was made to the city council about all of their kind of rules, they, they, they talked about a few issues, but they really spent a lot of time on this seating chart. And Councilmember Brown is going to kick us off with this little comment here hinting at what might be coming down the pipe.
Councilmember James Brown.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Stacy, and Councilmember Baxter for your, for your work on this and all the other committee members. I especially like the table of contents. I don't know who laid it out, but that's very helpful. And I may bring an amendment, well, I will bring an amendment to the seating chart. And it's going to be something that's seniority based.
So Councilmember Brown starts off by first acknowledging what great work they did on the table of contents, like they're a child who is about to get an F on a paper, and the teacher's still trying to find something positive to say about the paper. But he says, hey, look, you know, this should be about seniority. I guess those who've been there longer get to sit closer to the center is what he's claiming. I guess the center is where you want to be. I don't really know, because after all, a seat is a seat. I mean, I guess you can whisper maybe to your seatmates next to you. And so by being closer to the center, you get the ear of the person at the center. That's all I could think of. But beyond that, beyond those two seats sitting right next to the vice mayor, I don't quite understand what the big deal is. I mean, do you get a special throne if you sit closer? Are the seats better? I mean, they all have microphones. They can talk when they make, when they're all talking, regardless of where they're sitting, everybody can hear them, their microphones are at the same level. However, Councilman Reynolds, she now jumps in. Let's hear what she has to say on this ultra important issue.
Comes up about the seating chart. I just want to say that I didn't think it was necessary until this year. And then there were just a lot of things happening, and it felt very necessary to have a seating chart. We came up with this one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12 thing that, you know, I don't want to sit all the way over there, no matter how many years I've been here, but I'm okay with that if it means that we're not debating about where we're sitting all the time. So I know there's others that have different ideas of how it should be, but I just, I think that, I think that this is what we came up with, and we came up with it for a reason. So, thank you.
She says, look, it's necessary because you all want it. Stop arguing over where you're going to sit. She even says, I'm fine with sitting on the end, just stop it, which seems like a logical position to take. Now, she was involved, of course, in the process of making the seating chart, and the seating chart does put her at the end. And I am now reflecting on the fact that I am seriously talking about a city council seating chart like it's an important issue. But regardless, now city council member Kathy Pullo jumps, chimes in. And because, well, she doesn't want to sit on the end, and while she's been there quite some time, so I wonder what side of the issue she will come down on.
I agree, Councilmember Reynolds. I do think we have to have a consensus or an understanding of how that works, because in the seven years I've been here, it's pretty much whoever gets to the seat the fastest. And so, unspoken, while it was. But I, I do have some reservations about doing it by, by council district. I don't think any district should be pigeonholed into having the same place from years moving forward. And selfishly, I would say 12 will always be, would always be at the end, and one would be at the other end. And I think that we should, and I know Councilmember Brown mentioned bringing forward an amendment that looks at seniority. And with that said, many legislative bodies, including the federal government, looks at the, the seniority when they're making the seat decisions and also office decisions. So when this amendment comes forward, I will make an amendment to the amendment, just to clarify a few areas of that. But I wish we would reconsider looking at a more equitable, equitable method for seating, but we do need one. Thank you, Chair.
Equitable, she says. I don't want people pigeonholed into sitting somewhere. What am I missing here? Like, why does it matter if you sit on the end or not? I don't want anybody stuck sitting somewhere. They don't want to sit. I want it to be equitable. What does that even mean? Equitable? Equal would mean something, but equitable? How is it equitable? Do you want everybody to sit on everybody's lap? Would that make it more equitable for you? Should we stack them maybe, or rotate them? Do we do a random lottery draw? What is the amendment on the amendment that she's offering? Will it be you draw a seat out of a hat? So so far, we have a debate between a numbering system or a seniority system. Well, now, we get Councilwoman Vogel to chime in with a new thought on the proposed numerical seating chart. And that is that it's racist. Let's hear what Councilwoman Vogel has to say. Now, now here, this, this is a lengthier statement she makes. We're going to grab parts of it and play parts of it and everything else as she's going through it. But keep in mind, Vogel's in District One, which means she would be sitting a whole six chairs or so from the middle. Just keep that in mind. And so really try to understand here where, what, what her plight is here. Okay, so first, she's going to start off by talking about sometimes how she needs to leave, and the extra six steps might just be a little too much for Councilwoman Vogel.
Emotional up here, that means that I would have to get up and cry all the way out this way and then try to come back in. So I wish that would be taken under consideration in the end.
She might cry and take too many steps while she's crying. Now, she just simply can't demand that she wants special seat seating because she just wants it. She wants to be closer to the center because that's where she wants to be. Instead, she, an elected official in charge of governing a city, might be crying six too many steps. And well, that just can't happen. But she knows that that is a silly argument that really isn't going to get this idea sold. And so what she goes ahead and does next is she, she says what these white liberals sitting on the city council really need to hear to change their mind. And that is that this seating chart is unequivocally, unavoidably, immediately, and obviously, extremely racist.
I want to talk about the segregation of the council if it's one through 12. If you look at one through six, and then you take in account of Council at-large Brown, then you have all the minorities on that side. And then when you come over on this side, it's all the white council. If anybody didn't take a look at the makeup. So I really took a, because, and then I would like to ask the question when I get to the end about, does the seats give you power? Or is it like me, the people give me power that I serve? So even if you tell me to go to one, I'm still going to feel like there's power because the people are here. But if, so I wanted to, I wanted you all to visualize that. And does that mean that the council will look like what the city already looks like with the segregation and the racial divide across the South and the North? These are the things that, when I ran that across some people in the district, this is what they told me, and this is what I saw. I mean, if you take it, y'all, y'all go and put the Bs and the Ws beside every one of those seats, even counting Vice Mayor Wu all the way that way. And so the majority would look like that. And so.
And there it is. Because it just so happens that one side may look a different way, because it just so happens that based upon numbering, that is just how it would look. She also had a bit in there about the chairs or the people giving her power, to which I agree. I don't think the chair itself actually gives you power. I think the people do. I think you still have a vote, no matter where you sit. So why does it matter? But she just said it. Now, the council would look racist, just like how racist the city of Lexington is. Yes, the city who renamed entire areas of town in order to be more inclusive because their names hearken back to slave times. The city who somehow has about a 50% minority council, even though it's a 70% white city. Then she jumps back into another argument, and that is she is simply not competent enough to sit on the end. Listen.
I'm new. I get a lot, and I don't really know much about government. I know boots on the ground, I know people. So I sit here with what y'all hear me say my mentor. When I don't know anything, he will take time to explain something to me. If I'm in that corner, and then CM Reynolds turns my mic off, so I won't be over in the hot, in the guy. And so those are the things that I'm thinking about. How can I grow as a freshman? And even if you do seniority, it's still that look to the community.
I don't know much about government. That's what she said. Now, I don't know if I'd be admitting that out loud. I mean, you already said you get so emotional during the simple business meetings that you need to leave, and now you're saying you're too inexperienced to sit on the end. Too inexperienced to sit on the end. Leaving a question of, well, should you even be on city council? You can't sit through meetings without crying, and you can't figure it out if you only have one person next to you to ask questions too. But she doesn't let the racist argument die there. Oh, no, no, no. She's decided she's going to go back to the old racism pot, because she still feels like she hasn't fully fleshed that out.
About not being included. Then you have the powerful white men who don't move it out.
Oh, yes, the powerful white men, like Dan, the vice mayor, the most powerful one in the room, whose last name is Wu. His name is Dan Wu. That sounds like a really white guy, doesn't it? I mean, his skin color may be lighter than hers, and I guess if that's all she sees, but technically, Dan Wu, not just technically, is as much of a minority as she is. Actually, when you look at the city council itself, out of the 15 members, only four are white men. The mayor in Lexington is a woman, the vice mayor is Asian, nine out of 15 of the city council people are women. If you can call this council racist, well, sheesh. It's full of women and minorities. There's literally four white men. But yet somehow, that is still a council full of powerful white men. Now, if I was Dan Wu, I'd take some offense to this, obviously. Aren't, after all, aren't you going after his heritage? Isn't that supposed to be so important? But of course, that's not what it actually comes down to. It's more the fact that, well, I just want to sit where I want to sit. She hasn't logically thought through the arguments, but the ridiculous of the statement doesn't stop there. No, Councilwoman Vogel swears that people in the community are aware of this issue and are paying attention. Listen.
It doesn't matter where I am. I just want to know, and I want y'all to really think about what it will look like to the people you serve as they look at this council. And you have all the people of color on one side, and all the powerful white people on the other side. That's, that's what my community is telling me, because I, I told them about the seating chart. And so I know there was a purpose behind this.
Who in her district did she tell about the seating chart? And who, who cared? Her spouse? Her best friend? I really want to know who it actually was who gave two craps about the city council seating chart. Does she expect us to believe people are just walking down the street, and they're seeing her and saying they have an issue with the city council seating chart? Who cares about the seating chart other than the 15 people in that room that saw fit to waste 30 minutes discussing this while spending our tax dollars? Instead, of meeting this ridiculous point with all the lack of seriousness that a complaint like this deserves, instead, the response is exactly what you would expect from a whole lot of liberals.
About the seating chart and how to assign people. We didn't take into account the people. We took into account the district numbers, and that seemed like the cleanest way to assign the seats. We didn't look at who was in the seat. So none of that was intentionally done that way. It was literally just by the numbers, and the people in the center stayed in the center because that's the at-large and the mayor and the vice.
Now, first, she doesn't respond to that with outright scorn, but she does state a reasonable position. We just kept the two at-large and the vice mayor in the center, because that's where they've always been, because of course, they represent the entire city. They're elected at-large. And I, I just want to make a note here that out of the three at-large, you've Dan Wu, not a white guy, you have Councilman James Brown, he's a black guy, and then you have Chuck Ellinger, a white guy. So out of the three, only one of them is actually white. But of course, that goes over everybody's head. However, even though you just stated that very reasonable position of, look, we just seated him, we didn't care about who was sitting in it, you, you said the wrong thing, because Councilman Vogel doesn't like that. She doesn't like you saying you didn't bother to think of her while making her seat. And she fires back with this well-thought-through retort.
What you just said, it's the ill intent or the not intention, intentional, that is really the subject, because on third and entry lane, people call me all day long, talking about the trash that's on that hill. They never call and say, they say, what are you going to do about that trash? But I've yet to hear somebody call me and say, what are you going to do about the people sitting by the trash?
Ah, yes. She's managed to take a discussion about a seating chart and has now turned it into a discussion about the homeless problem in her district, which don't get Vogel started on, because she's the same councilwoman who chastised her constituents for when they, in their own businesses, were calling the police out to deal with the vagrants, violent, and destructive homeless people that are wandering onto their private property, they called the police out to deal with it. She chastised them for doing so, telling them they weren't caring enough. But what do we expect? We have a bunch of unserious people, electing unserious people that don't actually want to solve the city's problems, but instead would rather wrangle a discussion about a seating chart to be about racism, equity, homeless people, and just not caring enough about the people in general. A 30-minute argument spent over a seating chart. It's like we're in third grade again. Well, coming up, Cameron says no mask mandates when he's governor. We'll take a deep dive into that right after this short break. 859 Print has local service and low prices. I personally have done tons of business with them, and I can tell you, whether it is getting things printed off, sending direct mail, making business cards, buying TV ad time, digital marketing, they can do it all. And as a special for listeners of this show, they're offering 10% off any and all print services using code RIDER2024. That is code R I D E R 2024 for 10% off. Check out 859 Print, you'll be glad you did. Listen up, my fellow business owners, you need to get your cybersecurity and IT support under control. Reach out to the folks at Amstun today. Call 859-300-0087 or visit amstun.com. It is no secret that cyber attacks have become a constant threat, and you need to make sure that your organization is protected. Amstun has over 30 years of experience working with businesses and governments alike. Call 859-300-0087 or visit amstun, A-M-P-S-T-U-N dot com today. So Daniel Cameron was on the Terry Miner Show in Louisville, and he had this to say about mask mandates. Let's take a listen.
Talk that mask mandates may return. What do you think of that phrase, mask mandates? And the, and the concept of that returning again, when we've seen all that, everybody says trust the science, and we've gone through the whole prism of, well, the science really wasn't correct here.
Yeah, I think that's a phrase you'll never hear Governor Daniel Cameron say, because we will not have mask mandates when I'm governor of the Commonwealth of Kentucky.
Big words there, there will not be mask mandates in the Commonwealth of Kentucky when he is governor. So the question is, what does he mean by that? And what evidence do we have to follow that up with? As I covered yesterday, the governor on his own can only mandate masks for 30 days. Then it had to go for the legislature for approval. However, school districts like Louisville can mandate masks still. In fact, if you remember, they were one of the last to get back into school and the longest in all the country to continue to mandate masks. And they can do that because of the failure of the Republican Legislature to get it banned. I covered this yesterday, as I said, but the legislature had the opportunity to pass a bill to ban schools from banning masks, and they failed to do so. So to say there will be no mask mandates, can the governor even do that? Well, yes and no. Obviously, he can say, I'm not going to have any mask mandates originating at the state level, so private businesses can choose to do what they want. However, he cannot guarantee that the schools won't mandate masks unless he uses the bully pulpit. Because, now, let, let me explain how the Republican establishment works. You see, the governor, as a Republican, would become the de facto party leader, sort of, in the state. McConnell still holds a, a big role there, but he would become kind of a de facto leader of the state, setting a policy for the legislature to follow. And it's impossible for the legislature, just, just establishment legislative people, especially those in leadership, they don't do very well attacking publicly of other Republicans. They will hide from it, they won't talk about it, they'll try to shirk it off. They sometimes will bring it up if you're really, really, really bad, but they will not do it publicly. No, what they do is, is they go out and they find primary opponents, they fund them against you, so on and so forth, but they can't say anything bad publicly. Why? Because establishment Republicans rely on Team Red Shirt versus Team Blue Shirt mentality in order to continue to convince you to vote for them. And if they start attacking fellow red shirt teams, well, then, the whole guise of you have to support everybody with an R next to their name that they rely on falls away. Now, you know how I am, and I've said this before, I would never tell you to vote for a Democrat. I find their views to be objectionable. However, there are Republicans that also, at the same time, you could say are not truly Republicans, and I think you all know exactly what I'm talking about. And so with that in mind, I don't think the legislature would be openly resisting Cameron or not delivering on something he's going out and speaking on. But the question is, is would Cameron push them? Now, has Cameron come out loud and said that he will push the legislature to ban masks in K through 12 schools? No, he hasn't said that. And you may think politically, it's not super smart to come out and say that. But understand also as well, Cameron himself doesn't really have an attachment to the legislature. If he's told by the Senate President, Majority Leader, the House Speaker, leadership there, simply, look, Cameron, we can't get this done. Here's XYZ reasons why. Does he simply accept that and walk away? Because he's never been in the legislature to know better. Well, one way we can know how, how attached he will become, how, how do we know what he will do is we can look, obviously, at his prior actions. Now, I happen to know that the AG's office was in court fighting on mask mandates. In fact, I was associated with that court trial, and I sat through the hours of hearing. And in that court case, the judge actually ruled that masks were as effective at stopping COVID as a chain link fence would be for stopping mosquitoes. And unless I am mistaken, because that case was brought before the State Supreme Court and then dismissed, because the challenge against it was based upon some other courses, I believe that that case is still in effect, which means that in Kentucky, the current legal ruling, not for those censors, I'm not claiming myself to say this, I'm just saying, in Kentucky, the current legal ruling out of the courts is that masks are as effective at stopping COVID as a chain link fence is at stopping mosquitoes. So the fact that Cameron fought on that issue may give you hope. And for me, it does a little bit. Wees did start that case, Chris Wees, attorney, he did start that case as so often as he did of many of the lawsuits that Cameron ended up eventually jumping onto. But even as Cameron was fighting in the courts about that, I don't think McConnell really wanted him to, because remember, at this time, McConnell was running ads paid for out of his campaign fund in order to encourage people to get vaccinated. So there is reasons to think he would push for a ban of masks in schools, because he's made a promise, there will be no mask mandates, you've heard it, I've heard it, he said it loud. And if he's willing to fight with the legislature, and he feels compelled to do so, he could get it done. But as I said, he's never been in it. And the people up there, they make up his inner circle a lot of times. Just look at the Cameron Campaign Steering Committee. And what you'll see is several legislators who've been vocally against banning masks in schools making up that committee. Obviously, we know Beshear isn't going to try to, to ban masks in schools. And so, you know, and I'll keep saying this, that when it comes to turnout, when it comes to turnout, and you're dealing with a state legislature that has failed to pass or completely address a lot of these issues, it makes people wonder. The only reason why people wonder, is Cameron gonna be able to follow through on this claim? You have a Republican legislature that's failed to do so. They pass bills where they spend more and more. They failed to ban masks in schools. They failed to return and stop COVID enforcement actions, even as they were going on, even as they said they disagreed with the shutdowns. They failed to ban vaccines, even at mandates, even at government institutions. And they failed to attach requirements to not fire hospital staff if you want state funding to help you with your staffing problem. Because of course, why should we subsidize their vaccine mandates? He failed, the legislature failed to do all of that, and they had opportunity. On top of that, you have a person who's viewed as a leader in the Republican Party, McConnell, who's at the federal level passing the largest pieces of gun control legislation and $1.7 trillion spending packages. So you don't have to wonder why people maybe wouldn't be necessarily excited about turning out for Cameron if he's not addressing these issues and calling it out. How can we be sure? Now, it could be politically non-expedient right now to do so. But I tell you this, I want Beshear to lose. But I once again have got to tell you something. I have very conservative friends. I don't have very many liberal friends. In fact, I don't think I have any anymore. And I've got conservative friends, and they're just, I'm not feeling an excitement from them to vote, an excitement for them to volunteer, an excitement for them to tell their friends to go out and vote. I guarantee you, the Democrats in Kentucky are very excited and motivated because Beshear is their last vestige of power, and they're getting out there and getting it done. And Cameron needs to be firing on all cylinders and turning out as many people as he can and getting them as excited as he can to go out and vote for them if he wants to win. And you gotta turn out your conservative base. But when you have doubts, when you look at the Republican legislature about what will a Republican governor do, and you can't get concrete answers exactly yet, it makes it harder for people to get excited. You could shoot the messenger all you want to, you can yell at me and be upset. But I, I want Beshear to lose. And therefore, I'm giving, I guess you could call it unsolicited advice on how, what I think Cameron needs to do to pull off a win. Well, coming up, the National Federation of Republican Women, or NFRW, is having their national conference next month. And a big fight is looming over what is a woman? I'll cover that right after this break.
Lexington Overstock Warehouse is central Kentucky's best source for stylish new home furnishings. Don't pay retail. With our low overhead operating structure and big-name brands, we offer the absolute best values on new furniture for every room. Shop online anytime at LexingtonOverstockWarehouse.com or visit our weekend's only showroom located at 156 West Tiverton Way. Right now, for listeners of this show, we're offering a special discount for our online customers. Use coupon code FREEDOM for an additional 10% off your online order today. Lexington Overstock Warehouse, low overhead equals really low prices.
Let me tell you guys about an event that I'm actually emceeing on September 16th. It's the Constitutional Kentucky's Fourth Annual Liberty Dinner. Let me tell you, this is a great time with amazing food. You're gonna hear some great speakers like Lee Watts from Patriot Point, Second Amendment Advocate Lucretia Hughes Cluckin, and of course, yours truly. Do all this while enjoying an evening surrounded by liberty-loving individuals like yourself. Get your tickets now at constitutionalkentucky.com. Once again, that is constitutionalkentucky.com. Purchase those tickets before supplies run out. So National Federation of Republican Women is having their national conference next month. And there's quite a fight looming. And, and I'm gonna have to explain some things. So this is a very niche story. You're not gonna probably see this anywhere else. This is a story I'm bringing you simply because I have a fair amount of sources in the Republican, the National Federation of Republican Women. And they're kind of filling me in on this. So I'm kind of breaking the news, I guess you would call it. So you're not gonna read a whole lot of stories about this, but it's a little bit of a niche issue. And, and let me explain a little bit about how the National Federation of Republican Women work. You see, in the Republican Party, anybody who's been a part of the party understands that it is really women who run the party. And I know Democrats always claim that Republican Party is the party that hates women, but that's just simply not true. In fact, all across the state, you'll find many, many counties where the county party is not nearly as active as the Women Republican Club is in that county. In fact, for a long time, and I think they're just changing it this year, it was a requirement that whoever was chair at the state level, the vice chair had to be of an opposite sex, ensuring that women had leadership within the party itself. And so these Republican Women Clubs, they really kind of run what's going on. Well, these Republican Women Clubs, they're, they're part of a national federation. They have a Kentucky Federation. And they're having their conference. And there is a committee that puts forward a slate of people. And who they're putting forward for president is a woman named Vanessa LaFranco, who's the New Jersey president of the Republican Women there in New Jersey. And she is slated, like I said, by the nominating committee to be the one. And normally, that's just easy. Once the nominating committee picks you, you're kind of there. They don't pick somebody else. You can run somebody, what's called from the floor, meaning somebody else gets nominated to run against them. But generally speaking, it's a dumb, done deal. However, it's gotten a little more difficult. Because you'll see Vanessa LaFranco believes that trans women, or men who've decided they're women, are women. See, Vanessa LaFranco has pushed forward a woman, quote unquote, woman, a transgender woman. So dude, pushed this dude forward within the Republican Women's Club in New Jersey. And in fact, pushed this dude forward so much that he won Woman of the Year in New Jersey because of what Vanessa LaFranco did. On top of that, there, there was a resolution that some people are trying to push forward to ensure that in order to be a woman member of the Republican Women's Club, you had to be biologically a woman. And that sense has been struck down to not be allowed to talk about. And so now, the women are concerned that the Republican Women's Club is being taken over by these liberal predations. So much so, that a woman named Julie Harris from Arkansas plans to challenge from the floor, which hardly ever happens. And the thought is, is she may in fact win. So what can you specifically do if you're a woman? Or even if you're a man? Well, first, if you're a woman, you can obviously get involved with your local Republican Women's Club. And then from there, make sure you tell the president how you feel about this issue so they can communicate it to the Kentucky delegation moving forward. Also as well, if you are a person who knows women that live in other states, good Republican women, you can allow them to know what's going on and push them to also vote for Julie Harris instead of Vanessa LaFranco. Because the question becomes, what does our party stand for anymore? How can we claim to be the conservative party while pushing forward liberal social ideas? The entire point of the Republican Women's Club is about pushing forward women. Their job is to seek women to run for office, and their job is to support candidates. Their job is to make sure women are engaged in the political process. How can you say you're standing for conservative values in politics if you can't even define exactly what a woman is? And if you are going to look at a transgender woman or a man and say that's a woman, I challenge you to then give me your definition. Well, y'all, that's what we have time for today on the Andrew Cooper Ritter Show. Thank you all so, so much for joining us. Have a great rest of your day. We'll see you back here tomorrow.